Okay, we are at 7:30. So I will call the meeting of the Lincoln Park City Council of August 17th to 2020 to order. If everyone would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, no matter where you are at, and our invocation will be given by Reverend Dave Duran of Friendship Baptist Church. So remain standing. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Reverend Duran, are you with us? He may be having some difficulty logging on. As we take this time of prayer, please remember the family of John Hennessy, who was involved in the boating accident in which two of the occupants are still missing. If our thoughts and prayers can be with their families tonight, at a moment of silence Thank you. If we could have roll call, please.
Councilperson's reading.
Present.
Higgins.
Here.
Kelsey.
Here.
Parkinson.
Here.
Ross.
Here.
Salsedo.
At present, be assured.
Ainir Carnes.
Well, good evening, everyone. First, leading off, we had a big vote primary just short, almost two weeks ago. And it was a whole lot of different primaries where, I mean, you had the voting places were different this time. There's a lot of moving around. There's a lot more absentee ballots. But I have to say that Carrie Kerr, our city clerk, and those that work with her in her office, and all the folks that did the election work, did a fantastic job for us.
Here.
Have not heard complaints. I've heard nothing but positive things. And as I spoke with her this afternoon, I learned that she is still working through everything. And then once she gets through all of this, then she'll start again on getting ready for the November election, I'm sure. I just wanted to say thank you and great job. And then, and I'm sure that the rest of the council will join in with that. We're still going.
We had a great group of people working with me. They did an amazing job. They were there for long hours and did a great job.
There you go.
I have nothing but admiration for them.
We were worried for a little while with all the changes and everything, but nope, did a great job. We have the pandemic that we're still in the midst of. I was looking over the numbers today and where they had dropped for a while, and I thought that we were through, but then they have a little bit of a rise still. And that rise has remained steady for, I think, for the last month. Not getting over a certain point, but continuing on those same times. It's my understanding that school will be opening on, school will be opening coming on the 8th, I believe it is, or the 9th, September 9th. I think they may be going to, it'll be volunteering for them to go and if they do it via computer, or they have the option of coming in for face-to-face learning. So I don't know how that is going to be working out, but the school board and Superintendent Terry Dangerfield will be having one heck of a time. And speaking of the school board, they lost their chairwoman this, just a short week or so ago. Dawn Johnson passed. So our condolences also go out to her family and to everyone in the school district who is, I'm sure, feeling her loss and the loss of her leadership, too. But in talking back with COVID, that Lincoln Park, just the relatively small community of Lincoln Park, we've had 500 confirmed cases of COVID. And so you can see how widespread, widespread that is. To help combat this, because at this time you still need to have the blood drawn and such, I'm going to read a little flyer that the police department has, and it's, "We're all in this together." And it's, "Lincoln Park Police Department Blood Drive Held at the Kennedy Memorial Center," which is 3240 Ferris Avenue, Lincoln Park, Tuesday, August 18th, 2020, which is tomorrow, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Now unfortunately, this is not something that you can just walk in for because of social distancing and such. And I do not think it's too late to get an appointment, though. So for an appointment, you need to log on to redcrossblood.org, and the sponsor code would be LPCP for Lincoln Park Community Policing, or call 1-800-RED-CROSS. And then all presenting donors will receive a Cedar Point ticket, valid at Cedar Fair Theme Park, and a $10 gift card sponsored by Suburban Propane. So that is coming out because they still need to have blood. Through this whole COVID situation, our first responders, the fire department and the police department, have been doing an exceptional job for us. And of course, with the ambulance personnel and such, and the people that work in the hospitals and all those, they've done fantastic job for us. But our police and fire departments have, as I said, done a wonderful job for this. The state has come forward with a plan that we could be, as a city, reimbursed for, to hazard pay for the officers and firefighters that work through these conditions. I think it's up to $1,000 a person. And our city manager may speak on this a little bit later on, but it's our goal to get this hazard pay for all of our firefighters and all of our police officers that worked and did this job for us in the COVID. We had a little bit more news about someone in need of some of our prayers. Is you have George Cretu, who is the Economic Development Corporation Chairperson, had suffered a serious illness that he is recovering from now. So he needs our thoughts and prayers also. But speaking of the EDC and the Downtown Development Authority, at a joint meeting earlier, they voted unanimously to appoint a new director. We had been without an executive director for the EDC and the DDA since the beginning of, since Giles Tucker left, and that's been seven, eight, eight months ago. Mr. Malish comes to us currently from Florida, but he was a longtime director in Louisville, and I think it was New Albany area, which is in Indiana, right across from that area. He brings over 30 years of experience to the city of Lincoln Park with community development, downtown authority, working in downtowns, working with farmer markets, farmer markets and such. So we anticipate that, we anticipate that Mr. Malish, we anticipate that Mr. Malish will be starting at the end of this month. And then the next item that I have is, there has been some talk of the investigation into the improper use of keys or the alleged proper use of keys or the improper use of city equipment, to the point that Assistant City Attorney Miri Mislamovich was enlisted to perform or to have an investigation made. Mr. Mislamovich issued a report to the city, and the details of the such are, "On June 24, 2020, the Exchange Club of Lincoln Park held installation of new officers at the Lincoln Park Man Show. The Exchange Club is not affiliated with the city. Among those attending was Mayor Thomas Carnes, Judge Gregory Clifton, and Maureen Tobin. Judge Clifton was being installed as president. And Maureen Tobin, who had previously worked for the Parks Department, is now the events coordinator, working for the city manager, has a key to the Parks Office. Ms. Tobin entered the Parks Office and removed chairs, table, and a podium to be used for the installation. These items are returned to the Parks Office at the conclusion of this installation. There are no damage to any city property. Ms. Rain Christian of the Parks Department was notified by text and Facebook that evening that her office had been entered. The next day, when Ms. Christian entered her office, she noticed the fan used to cool her office was moved from where it usually stood. Other than that, nothing else was disturbed. Ms. Christian believes that she should have been notified and asked for use of city property from her office, but was not. Since the park facility's bathrooms were closed due to pandemic, she felt the city property tables, chairs, podiums were used improperly. I spoke to Judge Clifton regarding the matter. He believed that the Exchange Club had permission to use this property for installation. The presence of the mayor and Ms. Tobin is strong indication of consent. I do not find any violation of city code, nor do find an indication of improper conduct. At most, there is a lack of communication between parties." This was meant as an innocent outside event that, to bring light to the new president of the Exchange Club. So if there was some ill thoughts or problems that resulted from this, then any blame then should be directed to me. And if that is the case, then I apologize for any misdeeds that have arisen from this. As I said, I believe that this was an innocent meeting. Nothing was taken out, no restrooms were used on the inside, but it may be misconstrued by other people. So I apologize if that is the case. We will work on better communication if there is another event of that type. Lastly, I had an email that I wanted to bring up with you because this is an email that received in various different times from various different folks. And it has to do with our city trees, or trees that are between the sidewalk and the curb. And a citizen does not have the right to remove these trees or trim them on their own, and this is something that is done from the city. So in order to do these, we have what's called a tree list. But I'm going to read a little bit from this complaint, and then I'm going to ask John Kazoo to come on and give me, give us information on how the tree list is developed, how it goes about, who's responsible for the tree trimming and such. And this was an email that was actually to the liaison for the DPS, Carlo Solcito, that I'm sharing with you now. "I'm contacting you because I've already tried in vain to contact the Department of Public Works for the city of Lincoln Park. I noticed that you are the liaison of the department, so I'm hoping you can help. I contacted the city DPS on September of 2018 to request removal of a tree on our property that is a quote 'city tree.' DPW referred it for review, and the tree was marked for removal shortly thereafter. I was told it would take some time because there was a long waiting list, so I knew that ahead of time. After eight months, I called the DPW to see when we're on the list, and were told they had no way of knowing, but that, of course, we would move up because we had already been waiting eight months. Since then, I have called numerous times, only to be told I could attend a city council meeting, or I could have the tree cut down at my expense. After waiting almost two years, I would hope that I should be close to having it cut down. I'm a lifelong resident of Lincoln Park, have lived at White Street my entire life. The tree has been causing numerous issues to our plumbing and have had to have it snaked out many times, and even had the plumbing leading out replaced. Our sidewalk has popped up in front of the tree twice. I was told by the DPW that our tree was a moderate risk, so I would hope that it'd make it more likely to be cut down. Last month, we had a large branch snap off and fall to our sidewalk, just missing a neighbor's car. Luckily, my neighbor helped me drag it to the backyard so it could be cut up. On one of the last calls, DPW, they said there was nothing else that could tell me that they had a supervisor call me. He never did. Last week of August 5th, I emailed him directly for some answers, and I've yet to hear from him through email. Just wants to know why no one can tell me anything. Understand the service is contracted out, but do they have responsibility to the city? And does anyone keep track of what is being done?" So as I said, this is an issue we've been hearing about for a while. So I'd like, John, to talk about the tree list and how it goes about, what's being done, and at what rate are the trees being cut? So, John?
Good evening, Mayor and Councilor. At present, as you, the mayor has already touched on, the tree removal, a tree trimming is an outside contracted service. Now this year, again, a tree removal contractor is behind. For the last three months, or I should say, they were not allowed to come in, resulting of the COVID governor's executive rulings. They were not allowed to come in and do their work because they were not a selected contractor of a contract with necessity. So they were unable to come in for three months. They're back in town now. They are running into their own internal issues with COVID amongst their workforce, but they are significantly behind. At present, we have 89-plus trees for removal and over 300 trims that need to be done. They have been able to come in if we maybe had an emergency removal necessary for maybe a water main break or a sanitary issue, but they are behind. I have talked to the contractor numerous times, and what we're going to try to do is, my department's going to try to provide them, to keep them functioning, so that we can try to service our citizens better. We are going to try to issue them removal and trims on a weekly basis. Prior to this, we gave them a comprehensive aggregate list of all of these trees, and we even went through and broke it down by what I want to call garbage days. That way, they didn't have to try to rustle up homeowners to move vehicles. They could come in and, on garbage day, and do either the trims or the removals. But that really hasn't been real prudent. So we're going to try another process on a weekly basis to see if that'll be more prudent for the citizens, because the citizens are the ones that we are here to serve. And if we can't get greater motivation out of them, then I may come back at a later date with a different recommendation. Does anybody have any questions of that type and see the answer for you?
How does, well, excuse me. It's, in just a moment, this is still my comment part. You know, when citizens call in with this, especially somebody that's been on there for 18 months or so, what are they being told?
Basically, what they're being told is, we're putting them onto our list, and we're providing that or passing that on to the city's removal contractor.
But who would the emails, as a citizen said that the emails weren't being returned or calls weren't being answered? And who would be the person that would be responsible for that, for returning those calls and the emails?
There's multiple people that these emails can and do go through. There is one that comes in off of, when you voice a concern, off of the city's website. There's another one that would go to myself, my clerical, our clerical up front in the dispatch office, and/or the two supervisors. So there's multiples.
Do you understand how it could be frustrating to a citizen that is out there that is not seeing any type of improvement, or basically they're not seeing a light at the end of the tunnel of when their work is going to be completed?
I do understand that, because I also understand where, basically, I'm trying to get our tree removal contractor to go out and do some of this stuff, because I'm the one that's held accountable.
I got you.
So yes, I do understand that.
Is there, how much of a budget do we have left for tree trimming this year? Or we have the full budget?
But let me go backwards for one second since you brought this specific question. Around February, this past February, I knew we had approximately $50,000 left in, let's call it the last budget year. So my goal was to utilize that money and complete as many of the removals and trims as possible. Then unfortunately, COVID arrived. That COVID process shut that particular contractor down. They were not allowed to go out there and do the work. And that basically, let's say, put them at a stand so for three months. We're into a new budget year, and we have approximately $140,000 to do trims and removals. Do we have enough to accomplish the work that we have on books now? Yes, sir, we do.
Okay.
It's trying to get the contractor with a healthy workforce to get our work done. That's why we've arrived at trying to provide them a list to hold them more accountable on a weekly basis. What we were doing before, we gave them aggregate composite lists, and as they removed the trees or trimmed the trees, and they would send through the invoices, we would take it off of our aggregate list. And we always started with the oldest going to the newest. We're going to try to do that on a weekly basis, so that we can hold better accountability for that contractor.
Well, we're going to be asking you what it is that we can do so that you can make sure that these, this gets accomplished. If the contractor is not living up to our expectations, your expectations for them, then we're going to need to find somebody who's going to be able to do the work for us. Because it's not fair to have this ladle down on your head as it, or as any of the council, or in the end, it's for the citizens out there. If they don't, they have an issue as far as branches falling, falling on vehicles, there's a potential for injury and things, these are things that we need to get accomplished. And so if the contractor is holding us up, then let's find somebody else that can do the job for us. Councilwoman Ross, I'm sorry, you had a question?
Yes, Your Honor. I know you hit on a couple of things that I was thinking, but I guess at the same time, do we have an end date with this contractor, or can we actually do another contract with someone, you know, and work them both, I guess?
The contract is actually written. If we're not satisfied with their, let's call it productivity, yes, we can terminate the contract.
Okay. So we'll be waiting for your recommendation for that?
Your Honor, if I may?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
I've had several people contact me about tree issues, and I'd like to know, John, what's your, what happens when they call you and you respond to them? Do you let the people know what's going on? A letter in the mail saying a tree's been looked at? I've had people say that, you know, they never hear anything. And what is the process?
Basically, it's just a verb, it's been a verbal process. Now what we have done is, we have actually printed up, I'm going to call it almost like a door hanger, where when we go, after we go out and, I'm going to call it, survey, look at a tree, should it be simply a trim or should it be removal? We've got a door flyer or a door hanger that we would put on the door so that these people would recognize that, yes, somebody's been here.
Okay. I've had several people who have talked to me who said they never got anything. So can I just please ask that, make sure that door flyer gets there in the future? Well, thank you.
This has been a process we just have started to implement. It has not been done, to my knowledge, previously.
Okay, thank you. I think it's a good idea.
It can be frustrating if you don't know what's going on with that. Okay, John, thank you for your information on that. That's all that I have under Mayor's comments. We will be moving on to our public hearing at this time. So at 7:57, we'll call our public hearing.
Aren't we doing consent agenda?
I have the, public hearing is first, so the consent agenda's first?
Yeah.
All right. Don't forget what I said for a couple of seconds. "Resolved that the following items listed under the consent agenda be approved as presented to the mayor and city council. One approved minutes, regular meeting held April 3, 2020. Two approved minutes/study session, RE marijuana ordinance slash August 3, 2020. Three solicit bids, water and sewer rate study. Four solicit bids, police towing. Five, reappointment, DDA Riker. Six, reappointment, EDC Judah. Seven, reappointment, EDC Eaglesfield. And eight, reappointment, EDC Hildebrand."
I'll move.
Of course.
Okay, discussion?
Yes, Your Honor. Number four, solicit bids, police towing. Can we move that to the action items? I have some comments, some questions. Can't do that or any consent, so I'd like to have that moved to the action items.
Yep, it only takes one to request that. Is that correct, Ms. Carey?
It is.
All right. So that would be moved to the last action item. And further discussion on the consent agenda. Can you now call the roll?
Councilperson's reading.
Yes.
Higgins.
Yes.
Kelsey.
Yes.
Parkinson.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Salsedo.
Yes.
Ainir Carnes.
Yes. So now I will call the public hearing to order at 7:58 p.m. "The purpose of this public hearing is to obtain the views of citizens, public agencies, and other interested parties regarding the reprogramming of housing and urban development or HUD home grant funding for fiscal year 2017, in parentheses, $109,785, and fiscal year 2018, $147,928, to be used for home buying, counseling, and home purchase assistance. This hearing is required so that the city of Lincoln Park, Community Planning and Development, may reprogram the funds for program years, PY, program years 2017 through program year 2018, and to include the use of home buyer counseling and home purchase assistance for qualified low moderate income individuals and families. Written comments regarding the proposed activities and past performances issues may be directed to the Lincoln Park Community Planning and Development, 3240 Ferris, Lincoln Park, Michigan, 48146, or by email to dchristian@citylp.com. Any written comments must be received by 3:00 p.m. on Tuesday, September 12." comments must be received by 3:00 PM on Tuesday, September 12, 2020, in the Office of Community Development. All comments received will be considered and no further action will take place prior to July 21, 2020 request date. So we'll open this up, uh, for discussion from council. Okay, hearing none. Then we'll open it up for public comment. James, if you would, um, unmute everyone so that we can, are there any comments or questions from the audience? I think you muted everybody, James.
I unmuted everybody.
Okay. Okay, I'm not hearing, um, any public comment. So we will adjourn the, the public hearing at 8:01 PM and reconvene the, the regular meeting. So first, we have, our first action item has a cover letter from our city, city manager, Mr. Grzan, on adoption of marijuana licensing ordinance. And this says, November 5, 2019, voters in Lincoln Park approved the site, Citizen Initiative to allow for the licensing of marijuana businesses in the city. On December 2, 2019, the city resolved to hire an outside attorney to address policies to implement the Citizen Initiative. The first draft of the city's marijuana licensing ordinance was presented to mayor and council in the study session on June 15, 2020. Following that study session, some changes were made to the ordinance and a near final draft was presented as a follow-up session on August 3. At this point, the city is ready to move forward with the first and second readings of the ordinance. However, there is one final decision, uh, the bank, and this has to do with a co-stacking of licenses. Uh, what the Citizen Initiative allowed for potentially up to four different marijuana retail businesses, it only allowed for one license for the other, growers, processors, transporters, and safety compliance facilities. As was explained during the study session, this would likely cause issues for businesses who desire to grow, process, and sell their product. Okay, uh, I'm going into the, the ordinance, which I believe has the, um, section in it that would allow the stacking as that was the general consensus, um, by a four to three vote at the, um, at the study session, or not, not vote, but going around the table, I guess. Um, so be it resolved that an ordinance to amend the municipal code of the City of Lincoln Park by repealing chapter 853 and replacing it with a new chapter, 853, entitled Marijuana Licenses, be given its first and second reading by title only. And the City of Lincoln Park ordains that Part 8, Title 2 of the Codified Ordinances for the City of Lincoln Park, Chapter 853, be amended by repealing and replacing it with a new Chapter 853 entitled Marijuana Licenses. And I'll move on this.
Report.
Now, in discussion, James, would you be able to, um, explain the, the section that, that allows the, the stacking? Or that has, what, was the bone of contention at the study session last, last week?
Uh, okay, so in short, um, the, the difference between the two, um, had to do kind of with the lottery, with the way the licenses would work out. So if we had an applicant who would apply to be a marijuana adult use retailer, a medical use provisioning center, as well as a grower and processor, that one applicant could potentially take the only grower and processor applications. Um, basically what this ordinance does is it allows somebody, if they do apply to be a retailer, they can also as a secondary use grow or process. Um, this doesn't allow additional license, licenses beyond, um, those actual retailers and what was approved in the initiative. So yes, in theory, you could potentially have five growers and five processors, but that would be if everybody who applied for, um, one of the four retailer licenses also asked for a grower license and a processor license. And the likelihood is a lot of the grower, or the retail will be stacked anyway with, uh, adult use and medical. And I do believe, um, Jason Canvaser is on Zoom as well, if you have more specific questions.
Okay, I think we'll open it, thank you for being here, Jason. Uh, I think we'll open it up to, um, to the, to discussion.
If I may, sir?
Yes. Yes, go ahead.
853.07, paragraph B, additional licenses. I think we agreed that under the first proposal, under A, that they would have to apply for each individual license, paying the $1,000 fee until it was approved, and then they pay the $4,000. But they would have to apply for each category. And is that still where we stand, um, as far as applying for the individual licenses on all the different categories? Is that correct?
Uh, Jason, could you respond to that?
Sure. Um, so there was, there was two drafts of the ordinance, um, that I sent over to the city manager. There was, uh, option A, where in 853.07, um, you could only apply for one license, there couldn't be any co-locating, and there would be a separate lottery for every single, uh, category of license.
Okay.
And option B, which is, um, my recommendation and the city manager's recommendation, um, there could be some exceptions to that where you could have a retailer also have a limited amount of, um, plants to grow and be able to process as well.
But that person would have to, uh, apply for that type of license also, would he not?
They would have to, under the option B, they would have to submit a comprehensive plan, um, indicating which licenses they were looking to, um, apply for. They would go into the lottery once, um, but they would pay the licensing fee for each license that they were seeking.
Okay.
So they would pay one, if they had three licenses that they were seeking, they would pay $3,000 upfront, and then they would pay the remaining amounts, um, the $12,000 at the end if they were approved.
Counselor President, did that answer your question?
Yes, I think so.
Okay.
My question to the chair.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
When this initiative was done by the citizens, there was a vote by the citizens either up or down. And people voted on the proposal as it was stated, okay? And we just got done talking in a previous session about citizens and taking care of what they're, you know, what they should expect from the city. I'm kind of confused of why we're changing it when that was the actual proposal that was voted on by the actual citizens, the actual election of what they expected to get, whether they voted for it or against it. And now I understand there's a possibility that the licenses could go from eight to potentially 16 if the stacking is done and somebody gets in there and says, I'd like to buy more than one, or whatever. Am I correct in saying that or not?
I would have to disagree with that slightly.
All right.
The petition said there should be no more than two of each retail and medical use retail. Um, but it said there should be one of each. It didn't use the qualifying no more language. So I think there's certainly some room for interpretation there. Um, I think if the initiative had indicated that they only wanted one of each, they should have said there should be no more than one grower, no more than one transporter and on.
So the interpretation is the benefit, not the negative. We're interpreting it where they could, they probably meant more, not the same. Am I correct what you're saying? Basically?
I believe, I, that's how I interpret it.
Okay, well, I'm just, I'm not trying to put you, I'm just asking a question.
Sure.
Well, I've had people ask me the same thing. If they voted on something, and they're not lawyers when they vote, and I'm sure these are not written by lawyers, even though they should be sometimes. The citizens vote on what they see, not what's explained to them before or in this scenario. They vote on what they see, and they vote on the numbers. The numbers are there. Whether you voted for or against it, people wanted marijuana. But what they wanted was a certain, the, the ones that voted for or against were looking at a certain number. That's where I'm confused at, because as, as elected officials, we've already had the citizens make their decision where they want to go. Now we're saying that we have some latitude, which is maybe true, I'm not a lawyer, I don't know, maybe it is, it isn't. That was my question on this vote. It's not whether we allow marijuana, it's, it's whether we allow more or we interpret it, we, being the city, interpret it as being more than what was put on the ballot. That's all.
Mr., Jason, could you, um, give us a little background in how that, how that developed and what the, the worry was that, um, some people would be, I guess it wouldn't be fair or they'd be shortchanged in the, in the process? They wouldn't have the same opportunities that the, that the first person would have?
Yeah, so what we originally drafted, when I originally drafted the ordinance, I was working with the city planner and city manager, it was drafted to allow for co-locating, having one lottery and first come, first, first winner, first, first take, so to speak. And the issue arose that if the winner chose, um, applied for retail and applied for a grow and applied for a processor, they would win and they would be able to use all three. Now, if the second winner applied for the same licenses, they would have submitted an application and corresponding fees to do three, but there, the way the lottery was structured, they would only be able to use one of those licenses, meaning they would have to redo their plans and there'd have to be some kind of mechanism for refunds, I would think, to, to make it fair. Um, that was certainly being discussed as well. So that's where we decided to kind of take this divergent path and say, look, it should either be, um, one license per person, no co-locating, no stacking, we will do the separate lotteries, period, and that's the option A, or we will try to make this a little bit more fair, um, make this a little bit of, you know, co-locating, I think, in my opinion, gives businesses a better success chance. They give them a better likelihood of being able to, um, decrease their internal costs and be a successful business. So we created a situation where we weren't looking to flood the market with licenses and use it as really a secondary use, so that it helps support their main purpose of retail if they were so chosen, um, without really expanding too far the amount of licenses. What I would envision under that second option is if the person applies, they're gonna apply for medical and recreational. And so if they also had the other licenses, um, I, I really see two licenses at the end of the day with, with retail and then probably accessory uses, and then possibly one grow and possibly one processor on their own. But, um, that, that was the thought process in terms of how we.
It's, uh, my understanding that the, in order to have, uh, you have to have the medical license in order to get the secondary, secondary one, is, would that be accurate?
The recreational one?
Recreation, the recreational, yes.
Right, there's some higher hurdles to get into the recreational market. So, um, somebody seeking just a straight recreational license is, is probably unlikely.
Okay. All right, thank you, sir.
I might follow up.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
So actually, the council wasn't consulted. You and the planner and all that decided that was the best way to go on, based on the discussions, right? Because I don't think anybody on council gave you direction either way. We just looked at the proposal, and that's what I thought we were voting on. And then you just explained what happened. But, you know, it's kind of weird because that is in any proposal that's put on the, the, what I call a ballot, we as citizens have to look at it in the, in the worst-case nightmare, because unless it's designed specifically, I don't care what it is, that it's room for interpretation by somebody else to therefore give it to somebody else, which is us, to therefore enforce it. Hey, I'm confused. I guess I'd say I'm not a lawyer, but I do know when somebody goes and do it, they're not lawyers, but they have a certain intent of whoever put this together, this petition went out and told the citizens, this is what I want you to, this is what you vote, this is what it says, I'd like you to vote on it good or bad. And they voted for. And I'm just confused where the, the meeting, you know, and we hired you, and this is where my concern, we hired you, and because you do that. But we weren't at, you know, the, you sat down and then you decided with a group, other than the council, to have these two options, and that's what was gonna happen, given to the council, other than the fact that this is what the, this was really what the citizens wanted. I guess, I'm confused, okay, and I, I think I'm confusing myself more. But I'm confused at how we got here when the citizens put it on a proposal, they voted, it was put up, it was presented, it was printed out, and then now we're here with, oh, we're gonna go from this to that because we think it's good business sense. Well, that's not what the county, the residents had in mind. They weren't business.
Thanks.
Well, I'll just leave.
We have, uh, we have the city attorney that would like to, uh, comment on, on this. Ed, go ahead.
Yes, Mayor, and I don't know if counsel can audibly hear me from the podium here, but.
Were you able to, to hear what he's saying, folks?
Yeah.
Okay, very good.
Fairly.
From there and council, I understand that you've been invested with statutory authority from the state of Michigan to expand. In fact, you had the opportunity long before the ballot initiative to adopt whatever ordinance you wanted, and instead you defaulted it to the initiative of the voters. Irrespective of that, what the voters approved is your floor, not your ceiling. Mr. Canvaser is correct, the planner is correct, and council is correct. You have the authority to go beyond the mere parameters that were adopted by the voters and that's been presented in a more fair and perhaps equitable light based upon your concerns that you raised in your earlier meetings to Mr. Canvaser. I don't know, members of council, how it could be any clearer than that, that it's within your authority to make that decision, to go beyond what the voters accepted. It doesn't matter that you are a lawyer or not a lawyer. You've perceived the voter's intent. The voter's intent is expressed, in my opinion, in the ordinance. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Your Honor. I appreciate the lawyer making that a point on camera.
Okay. All right, um, further discussion to his.
If I may, Your Honor?
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Canvaser, um, you said that it was in your opinion that, that the businesses would thrive if they were, if, if we added those, uh, additional secondary licenses. But do you have statistics for it?
No, I'm not basing it on any statistics. And I, I'm not, I don't want to use the word thrive. I, I think it gives them a greater likelihood of, of being successful. Um, I think it's, you know, again, I can't point to a specific statistic, but I think it's pretty well documented that the price of a pound of marijuana in, in the medical and recreational market is, is pretty high right now. So being able to be vertically integrated would help any, any business.
Okay, if I could also ask you, why four? Why four additional licenses? If we're limited to two retail establishments and two marijuana provisioning establishments, I, I don't understand why we need four additional licenses.
Well, up to, because the likelihood, I shouldn't say that, the possibility exists that somebody could apply for only one medical and, and we could have two medicals and we could have two recreations. I don't think that's what, that's going to actually happen, but it is a possibility. And so that's why it was up to four, to account for the two and two.
But there's no interpretation later that, um, I don't know, a safety compliance facility could, could actually get a secondary license to, to process or to grow?
A, a safety compliance facility is not allowed to have any of the other licenses.
Okay. I just want to make sure that this clarification is right. It just seems to me like we don't need that many. We don't, we don't need to double it.
If I may.
Are you all, are you all, all set? Counselwoman Ross?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, Counselor President, go ahead.
Yeah, um, the reason we had Jason come up with the two different scenarios, there was a, quite a few of us that wanted to limit it to what the ballot proposal said. And I understand what he's saying as far as co-locating and everything else. But again, I was not in favor of this. But again, I was not in favor of this all along, but the voters voted for it, so of course we have to go along with what the voters asked for. But that's why the A, the first scenario, I thought that would be the best for us, in that way we would adhere to what the voters had presented. I know we did have the discussion about lowering it from the $5,000 just to $1,000. I know we made a consensus there, saying, you know, if you're going to apply, you pay the $1,000, and then if you're approved, you pay the remainder, that rule will be owed. So, I just want to point out that we asked Jason to come up with these two different scenarios for us to decide how to handle it, and so now it's up to us to decide, but I was in favor of the A, where we didn't expand on the number of licenses that we would be issuing. That's my only comment, I'm done.
Your Honor.
Okay, yes, sir, go ahead.
You readily said A was the stacking, is A the stacking, or is A not the stacking? I want that to be clear.
The way that the ordinance reads is the one that allows the stacking, is that correct, Mr. Canvasser?
B is the option that allows the stacking or the co-locating.
Yes.
A is the one that is, A is the one that is not.
B is the one that you're voting on.
Okay, yes, as well as...
B is the one that we're voting on, and B is the stacking?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, and furthermore, I would like to add that if we're going to have these kind of businesses, and it's very clear, the voters made very clear that they want these kind of businesses, we want the best kind of businesses that we can get, and if we want the people who are willing to invest the money into this, into our area, it is going to be good customers. The more money they invest, and the better that if they can bring in more licenses, the better chance they are, that they have to survive and be a good corporate person, which is what we want in our city. Whether or not you were for this or against this in the beginning, it does not matter anymore. The citizens have said that's what they want, and if that's what they want, we want to give them the businesses that are going to come in the best chance of surviving and thrive in our city. And again, I'd like to say with the man, with what the whole attorneys have clearly said, this is that the citizens gave us where we can start, it does not mean that's where we have to end. So this is why I'm for the stacking. Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay, further discussion? Then, hearing none, clerk call the roll.
Mayor Carnes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Higgins?
Yes.
Reading? Voting on B? Correct?
Primarily, yes.
Yes. No, correct. Kelsey?
Yes.
Parkinson?
Yes.
Ross?
No.
Celcedo?
Yes.
That passed.
Okay.
That's first and second reading, correct?
That is the first and second reading.
Thank you.
That is right. Mr. Canvasser, I just want to express our thank you for the work that you did in this whole project for us, we appreciate the effort, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate the opportunity.
Thanks, Jason.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
We'll move on to the next, and apparently I spoke ahead of the game on my comments, but next item has a cover letter from James Kuzan, our city manager. "Since the beginning of the COVID-19 crisis, our employees have been making sacrifices and adapting to a constantly evolving situation. This has been especially true for both our public safety officers. During this crisis, our police and fire have been responding to calls for service that have consistently put them in higher-risk situations. On a near-daily basis, they were in contact with members of the public who were infected with the coronavirus. All through this, we have wanted to do something for our public safety officers to show appreciation for the danger in which they have been putting themselves and their families, however, we financially were not able to do so. On July 1, 2020, Governor Whitmer signed Senate Bill 690, which appropriated federal funds to help fight COVID-19 crisis here in Michigan. This bill also created a program for hazard pay for public safety officers. This program will reimburse communities up to $1,000 per employee, up to $5 million per agency, for hazard pay in response to COVID-19." So the resolution reads, whereas the COVID-19 outbreak has put an unforeseen stress on the city's public safety employees, whereas the city wishes to reward these employees for their efforts in keeping the city safe during the pandemic, and whereas the city has applied for a grant to cover the cost of hazard pay. Therefore, be resolved that the mayor and city council, upon a successful grant application, hereby authorize the payment of a special hazard pay of $1,000 per police officer and firefighter in recognition for their services during this crisis.
So move.
I would like to move on.
It's voted by you, Mayor, voted by the mayor, supported by the council.
And that is just what I was going to say, Council President, but a good thing. So, with the consent of you all, I would like to move on this and ask all of you to support.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so...
I have a question.
Open it up for discussion, go ahead, sir.
What about DPS employees? Didn't a lot of them work all the way through this?
Well, this is a program set up for the, for the state, by the state, to compensate the police and fire personnel. There were a lot of DPS workers that were out there, and we appreciate the efforts that they did, but in a lot of circumstances, the DPS officers were working from home, and were at home under full pay during the circumstances.
I think Jack Nizou was probably in every day.
But that's what the program was for, police and fire, I'm sorry, sir.
I still think you should look at the Cleveland DPS that worked all the way through, they deserve something too, because they were out there, out there public.
Okay, we have further discussion? I just say that I'm appreciative of our firefighters and our police department for the job that they did, and they put themselves at risk, and they put the, and their families at risk through doing this, and through it all, they did a fabulous job for us, I can't be more proud of both of the agents. So, further discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Mayor Carnes?
Yes.
Councilperson's reading?
Yes.
Higgins?
Yes.
Kelsey?
Yes.
Parkinson?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
And Celcedo?
Yes.
Okay. See if I have lost my way here. All right. This ashen item also has a cover letter from James Kuzan, our city manager. "And on July 1, 2019, mayor and city council approved the shared services agreement with the city of Melvindale for assessing services. Under the agreement, the city and Lincoln Park provides the administrative functions of the assessing department for Melvindale. Almost immediately after approving the original agreement, both communities failed on audit of minimum assessing requirements, AMAR, causing the need for a corrective action plan. This was done in August of 2019. Part of this correction, corrective action plan was to create an appraiser position in 2020. In 2020, both cities were informed of a successful AMAR partly due to the progress made on the correction, corrective action plan. The addition of this position will cause a change to the personnel cost for the collaborative, as such, the cities need to modify the agreement. I met with Melvindale's city administrator and their city attorney on July 29 to discuss. Together, we have modified Melvindale's monthly payments to reflect the additional personnel costs." So we have, whereas, in July 2019, the cities of Melvindale, Lincoln Park entered into a shared services agreement for assessing services, and whereas said agreement provides a mechanism to make changes to the agreement based on previous unforeseen factors, and whereas previous unforeseen changes in staffing are required for compliance for the city's corrective action plan, and whereas the following changes to the appendix of the agreement are being presented. And then the headings are fiscal year, and then annual original, and then annual proposed. For 2021, the annual original is $29,580, annual proposed $35,614. For 2022, annual original is $30,172, and the annual proposed is $36,326. 2023, the annual original is $30,775, and the annual proposed is $37,053. In 2024, annual original is $31,391, and the annual proposed is $37,794. Now therefore, be resolved that mayor and city council hereby approve the amendment to the shared services agreement for assessing services with the city of Melvindale."
Court with a question?
Okay, go ahead, sir.
My question is that since we were both have this issue, how are we handling it on our side? This takes you to the Melvindale side.
Excuse me, but it's actually the same. We have an identical corrective action plan to Melvindale, so this will take care of it for both of us.
Okay, thank you.
All right, further discussion?
Question to the chair and to the city manager. Has Bob been aware of, Bob was involved in this, in the assessing department also?
Yeah, yep, he's been part of the conversations, he knew we had to work with Melvindale.
Well, I just want to make sure he was involved in the conversation, thank you.
Okay, very good. Further discussion? Clerk call the roll.
Councilperson's Kelsey?
Yes.
Higgins?
Yes.
Reading?
Yes.
Parkinson?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Celcedo?
Yes.
And Mayor Carnes?
Yes. Our next item has a cover letter from Doreen Christian, who is Director of Community Planning and Development, Parks and Recreation, and it has to do with a word bid sale of 716 Cleophas, and in information, the city acquired this property in September 2016 on first right of refusal for $10,088.41 to renovate using CDPG Housing Stock Improvement Program funds and sell to low, to low moderate income family. Once we could get the house, John Myers inspected the interior of the property, it was decided that the cost to renovate the house would far exceed the price it could be sold for under HUD guidelines. We have already invested $12,155.55 into the property using CDPG funds plus employee time. On July 6, 2020, the city solicited a bid for the sale of the property in an as-is condition with restrictions that the house be bought up to the recommendation of city standards, all permits properly pulled at the building department, also renovation must be completed within 12 months of closing. Now, the scope of work that was required for this, this information from John Myers, our chief building official, is replacements of the furnace system, replacement of waterline system, including hot water tank, replacement of the roof system, including any damaged decking, replace all porch structure and exterior steps, complete renovations of both bathrooms and kitchen must be brought to code for building electrical, mechanical, and plumbing, all sanitary plumbing must be brought to code, life-saving system must be installed to code and operational, rear exit doors must complete a 90-degree interior swing from closed position, replace all windows that do not operate according to code, all restructuring of walls, landings, and floors must provide drawings, all trade buildings' zoning permits must be filed and approved before starting any demo or construction on said property. So, the bids we received were HP Snap Downriver LLC, $21,511, A&amp;S Property LLC, $20,101, BG CILLC, $20,100, Dora Ibera, $15,000, Michael Higgins Jr., $13,568.47. So, the resolution is, whereas the city acquired 716 Cleophas in September 2016 on the first right of refusal for $10,088.41 to renovate using CDPG Housing Stock Improvement Program funds and sell to a low moderate income family, whereas it was decided that the cost to renovate the house would far exceed the price it could be sold for under HUD guidelines, and the house was put out for bid in sale, for sale in as-is condition. Be resolved that HP Snap LLC be awarded the sale of the city-owned house located at 716 Cleophas, ID number 45-008-03-0075-002, for $21,511, with following stipulations. The property is in an as-in condition with restrictions that the house be brought up to the city standards as described in the bid documents, renovation scope of work required, and all permits properly pulled by the building department, at the building department. Also, the renovation must be completed within 12 months of closing, or the property reverts back to the city. Further be resolved that city attorney Edward Zelenek prepare the necessary closing documents and handle all closing procedures.
Come on. I have a comment and a question, Your Honor?
We need a supporter first.
I'll support.
Okay, then go ahead, sir.
Yeah, I want to, first of all, the Mike Higgins Jr., is my son, not me, I just want to make that very clear. And secondly, I would like to, you said in your comment, this was supposed to be sold to a low-cost family, and, but I don't think HP Snap is a low-cost family, can you get an understanding on that?
Well, it was originally, it was going to be sold under the HUD guidelines, but I think that, well, I'll let Doreen say it, but they had so much invested in it that they were not going to get their money, their money back for that, and then it'd be a loss. But, Doreen, it's your cake, I mean, it's your deal, go ahead.
Yes, exactly what you said, Mayor. With the HUD guidelines, you're only allowed to invest so much money into the property, and it has to be sold to a low mod income family. What we would be investing into the property, plus what we already have invested, I would have to bring the sale price way down to make it doable for a low mod family to do it, whereas an outside company can go out there and sell it to whoever, as long as it's brought up to the standards that we set for it.
Thank you, I just wanted it clear for the public.
Yeah, it is no longer a business property.
Councilman, go ahead, Celcedo?
Yes, thank you, Councilman Celcedo, this is like the second or third house where the city has bought a house on first right of refusal. Are they rolling the dice when they buy these? Because it always seems like we end up losing. You have some comment on that, please?
Well, I think that...
If you will let me, I can discuss it if you want me.
Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead.
I asked you that we had done by previous building supervisory, and we were told one thing, is they only inspected the outside of the house. Once we gained access to the house, which we can't when it's first right of refusal, it turned out to be a little bit more than what we wanted it to be. So it was, again, something that we were misled on what we thought it was versus what it was for a low mod family. I have the money for renovation, I just have to get the proper house to do it with.
So, and my follow-up is, on the first right of refusal, that means you're buying a house before anybody else can, right? And obviously, you're not looking at the inside of it, you're rolling the dice.
For the county foreclosures.
Is that true?
Well, it's for the...
I don't understand how we're gaining anything on this, that's, you gotta, you need a residence to understand this.
Okay, Councilman. Well, this comes from the county, and these are homes that are lost to foreclosure for back taxes, and then the property is made available to the city. At some point, we have to pay back the taxes that are owed. And previously, in the first right of refusal, we have put these properties out to bid, and companies have paid us to take these properties and then to pay the tax burden, and then with the requirement that these contractors would have to invest funds into the home to make it to where it would be an attraction in the neighborhood. You can go to the city manager and/or even the company that was awarded the ability to purchase this house, we were all given tours of property of first right of refusal that they had worked on and really turned around, that put between $30,000 and $35,000 into the homes. Thankfully, we don't have as many foreclosures now as we had in the past, but very rarely Thankfully, we don't have as many foreclosures now as we had in the past, but very rarely do. I mean, it's only been a couple of circumstances when we've had CDBG take the property to use that. More than often, when we did the first right of refusal, we would bid them together as a package and then turn around and have them into first-class homes that would be available for anybody to purchase. And I think that, and Doreen thought that they had a house that could be converted for this purpose, and with a small investment, they could turn around and go. But as you know, that sometimes you get involved in these homes, that you find things that you weren't aware of, and then the prices escalate. So I think that's why they decided to bail out of this project.
My last point is, the house sat for four years, and now we're finally moving it forward. So this four years too long, thank you very much for the answer.
Okay, further discussion?
Yeah, Mayor?
Yes, yes, Mr. Myers.
Can I add to that, Councilman? In the last two seasons of right first rights of refusal, we did purchase 23 the first year, and the last year, we purchased, I believe, 19. And we rotated them all from unused properties back to marketable, livable spaces for people to live in again. So we don't usually lose. We usually gain as we bought them. And remember, the one company that just bought this house has been the contractor for the last two seasons to buy our first rights of refusals to replace them, repair them, put them back into owner-occupied. I believe two years ago was 23. We're down last year to 19, and we'll see what happens in the coming year.
Thank you very much. Glad you cleared up.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Myers. Further discussion? Court call the roll?
Councilperson Brady?
Yes, and I'm pleased that there's a reverter clause in there. Thank you.
Ross?
Yes.
Higgins?
Yeah.
Kelsey?
Yes.
Parkinson?
Yes.
Salsedo?
Yes.
And Mayor Karns?
Yes.
Next item has a cover letter from John Kazoo, our Director of Department of Public Services. In background, the air conditioning system of the 25th District Court has been malfunctioning and failing for quite some time, including a leaking coolant coil. This leak is not allowing the system to be recharged. Most of these issues are due to the age of the system. Flow Air Heating and Cooling has performed several years, several repairs of this system in order to keep it functioning. Recently, Flow Air Heating and Cooling was called back out due to the system malfunctioning. They inspected it and provided the city with three options for repair. The first option, which they do not recommend, would be cutting the fins away and fixing the leaks at a cost of $14,241. With this option, it will reduce the quality and efficiency of the unit and is a short-term fix. Second option is their minimum recommendation for repair. This would include installing a new coil, pressure testing the system, replacing the refrigerant, and installing new dryer cartridges to the system at a cost of $21,000. Third option is to replace the entire system. This option is expensive and estimated a cost between $225,000 and $250,000. This cost is not in the current budget. It's my belief that option two is the best option currently. It should repair the air conditioning unit in a way that will extend the life of the unit while the future of the building is decided. There's also the opinion of myself and James Cruzan, the City Manager, that since Flow Air is very familiar with the court building and the aging system, that the bid process be waived to allow Flow Air to complete the work. Flow Air Heating and Cooling has been a contractor for the city for several years. They have always performed exceptional work and always complete the work in a timely fashion. They have thoroughly investigated the system and the building itself. Flow Air Heating and Cooling understands the work required and will not need to familiarize themselves with the unit or the building as a different contractor would. So we have resolved that the mayor and city council waive the bid process and allow Flow Air Heating and Cooling Incorporated to repair the 25th District Court air conditioning at a cost of $21,000 to come from account number, account 101-263-818000, Building and Grounds Contractual Services.
Court with a discussion?
Okay, sir, go ahead.
I know the court's been talking for a while about moving, and I asked James a while back if he had any updates, or if he could tell us how they're, not what they're doing, but how they're moving along. And I guess I'll ask the same question to the Chair, to James, is can you tell the council if there's any kind of, because of COVID, they're not meeting, because we're putting a lot of money into this building, based upon whether it'll be here or not be here. I'm just curious, I know James sits on the building, you mean, or should?
Well, I do also, I can answer that. At the last meeting, at the three communities and the building group that is for the, it's for the 25th District Court Building and the possibility of the Police Department Building, combined, there are questions about how to raise the, whether this was going to be an affordable option for either the court and/or in the Police Department. So at that point, they were looking for more study before any action had taken place, and this is at the beginning, beginning of March. There have not been meetings since that time due to the COVID. So currently, I think it is, I'm not saying dead in the water, but it's going to take more to proceed. It's nothing that's going to happen very soon, if at all, so.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just, that's all I ask, Lady.
Okay. Further, oh, yes, go ahead.
I just have a quick question. Are they working right now without air?
Quite a bit.
Mayor, if I could?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
John Kazoo. We have gone in and recharged existing units. The recharging does not last very long, but what we're presently having to do is, we're presently having to turn off the AC at night and then re-institute and restart it early in the morning, because presently, with the lack of coolant in the system, the system is creating very large ice balls. And if we don't allow those ice balls to thaw out, they get too big and they melt after they build up 12 to 14 inches of ice. And what's happening is they're melting into the ceiling tiles, and the ceiling tiles are falling through on the floor. So, yes, it is working, but it's working on our continuous recharging at an expensive rate.
And Mr. Kazoo, can I ask you what the warranty is on this work that they're providing for us?
The coil would have a one-year manufacturer's warranty. The labor would be provided by Flow Air for one year also.
Thank you.
Okay, further discussion?
To the Chair.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
And I guess this would be a question for John. We keep hearing about the bad condition of this building, how horrible it is. Is this building worth putting another $21,000 into it? Why, if we're, with the rest of the building in its bad a condition?
Yes, I do.
That's a lot of stronger money.
But to go back to what the mayor said a couple of minutes ago, right now, I don't think we can tell you if and when this building will be replaced, if at all. So presently, you're going to have to give, let's say, the court staff, the judges, an environment that they can work in. And right now, we're having a hard time keeping this court facility at approximately 72 to 74 degrees. For the most part, it's sometimes higher than that.
Okay, and even if it was going to be repaired, or a new building would be built, I think we're going to still be in there for at least a year and a half, two years, even at a fast pace, I would think.
Yeah, Mayor, if I may, having been involved with pre-large-scale municipal building projects in the past, even best-case scenario, we have at least one, maybe two more summers within that building. The employees, the judges, they need a place they can work and work comfortably.
I got you. Councilman Higgins, was that?
Here, Paul.
Okay. Further discussion? Court call the roll?
Councilperson Brady?
Yes.
Kelsey?
Yes.
Higgins?
Yes.
Parkinson?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Salsedo?
Yes.
And Mayor Karns?
We have, next item comes from the Chief Waters of the Police Department. Whereas the Lincoln Park Police Department is requesting to purchase three flashback HD in-car cameras, be resolved that the mayor and council authorize the Lincoln Park Police Department to waive the bidding process and purchase three flashback HD in-car cameras for a total cost of $15,513, which includes shipping from SF Mobile Vision, who is the sole supplier. We have further resolved funds to come from Police Department account 101.305.820 initially, Police Department JAG grant to fully reimburse the Police Department after the purchase has been made. Discussion?
Questions to the Chair, if I may?
Yes, sir.
Haven't we been transferring the fleet out from the old Crown Vics and stuff and that to the new Explorers? Is some of the stuff from the Explorers that, I don't know if they're up yet, are we going to be able to reuse that from the next Explorers we get, or is some of this equipment, or is this stuff to always be reinstalled or rebought? It can't be used? You know where I'm going at? If it's the same car, you're taking out a camera, it should fit in the next car other than the installation car, but it shouldn't cost, you shouldn't buy the camera. I guess that's what I'm asking.
Yes, Chief Waters, can you respond to that?
He's on the screen, so, Chief Waters? Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we got you.
Okay, so it would, you would be able to replace that, if we replace our cars in a more timely manner. Unfortunately, by the time we replace our cars, the cameras, the computers and everything else are always already outdated also. So we're not replacing our cars until they have well over 100,000 miles on them, and therefore, the rest of the cars wore down also. So the way we replace our vehicles, we normally have to replace everything, unfortunately.
Okay, well, thanks, Chief. That's all I, you answered my question. I wasn't aware. I mean, I answered what I wanted, but thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, further discussion? Court call the roll?
Councilperson Brady?
Yes.
Higgins?
Yes.
Kelsey?
Yes.
Parkinson?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Salsedo?
Yes.
And Mayor Karns?
Yes.
Got you. Next item, resolution has been moved by Councilman Kelsey and supported by Councilman Parkinson. Whereas the city of Lincoln Park has had study sessions to discuss bringing the building department operations back in-house, whereas the study session had presented from the Director of Finance and the Building Department Manager or on the feasibility of bringing the building department in-house at a substantial savings to the city. Now therefore be resolved that the mayor and council approves giving notice to McKinnon Associates to terminate their contract. The 90-day notice period will begin when the city notifies McKinnon Associates of the passes of this resolution. So then we'd open it to discussion?
Your Honor, if I could?
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
I just want to say, in light of our study session, I, for our option three that James gave us was to reevaluate in six months.
If that's a motion, I'll support it.
Yes, can we do that?
So it'd be, it'd be an amendment to the...
Well, not really. It's the first mover and supporter, that is the motion on the floor. She moved, she supported, so it replaces what's here. It's not an amendment.
Okay. So that would, as the city attorney said, that since there was a mover and supporter, that that would replace the initial, the initial resolution that was going. But, so Councilman Parkinson, do you have discussion?
Yeah, well, I said it before, if we go for another six months, it's going to be prime building season, and you'll have to go with it for another six months to get this together. I feel it's, right now is a good time to do it, because it's fall time, and the building department is going to slow down quite fast. Thank you.
Okay.
I have a question for the attorney through the Chair. Isn't when there's a motion on the floor, you have to vote on the motion? Because it was already presented and seconded, you have to either deny the motion or excuse the motion. You're putting a motion on top of a motion. Explain that to me, the Chair, to the attorney?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Unless I misheard, the actual mover and supporter of a resolution was the council president.
No, what you had...
Well, they placed it on the agenda.
So this, you had a resolution that was placed on the agenda that was moved by Councilman Kelsey and supported by Councilman Parkinson.
But there still has to be, they've moved in order to have it placed on the agenda. Am I not mistaken?
Yeah, they did.
They have not formally moved on the floor as the meeting's called to order.
That resolution.
What's that?
Right, and I support it. So that is considered first.
All right, so this isn't, let's get...
Yeah, I'm sorry, I can't hear over here either.
Get this straight. I had said that he had moved and supported that, so that's not the issue. It is on, it is on the floor as a valid, the initial one.
The initial one is presented before council for discussion because it's on the agenda, but it requires a formal mover and a supporter at a meeting to become law.
Well, that's the fine point, but in the, in the end, that, they were the mover and supporter. It's there, it's on the table.
All right.
But what you have is somebody coming forward and wishing to then amend that.
The clerk will accept that as an amendment. I'll defer to her judgment. So the move to amend is by Council President Brady, supported by Councilwoman Ross, is that correct?
Vice versa.
All right, whichever order that's in. So that's, that's a motion to amend. The original resolution is presented. If they, if the mover and the supporter of the original resolution would then reject that, then their question becomes the question on the floor. If they won't accept it as an amendment, then Councilwoman Ross, Council President Brady.
Amendment first, Eddie.
Yes, that's right. So you vote on the amendment first, and then you'll go back, it will actually replace the original resolution.
So a question, a point of order for me, is, does the mover and supporter of the original amendment have to accept the, have to accept the amendment, the change?
In my opinion, they don't, because my interpretation of the placement of mover and supporter has to be officially done at the meeting, not something submitted prior to the meeting in writing. So it doesn't have to be accepted.
Similar to when I presented a candidate for a Public Safety Commission, and then it was changed to...
Yeah, altered, it's an altered resolution. That's right. This is an altered resolution, because there's no formal action before the body, even though it's been placed on the agenda pursuant to your rules, Your Honor. The real mover and supporter today are Councilwoman Brady, the President, and Councilwoman Ross, who made the motion.
I apologize for a little bit, a little bit of the confusion.
That's okay.
So reiterate, City Clerk, what is the amendment?
The amendment is to amend the above resolution to continue the contract and reevaluate in six months instead of the last paragraph.
Okay, so we will now move to discussion on the amendment?
Yeah, well, I guess I'd like to, through the Chair, discuss the amendment. I guess, I guess I'm confused, and I don't want to debate this issue, because I'll look it up myself, because this is not going to be inclined to debate this. I guess, the only problem I got is the fact that the six-month isn't a, in a mandated, well, it will be in a mandated resolution, because if it's meant to here, then it will be mandated. The only problem is, is the fact is whether or not this will come back to the management team, to the council. And I don't know how the council would, you know, and I'm just saying, because we changed council, you know, unfortunately, council managers or city managers quite a lot since I've been there. Anyways, I guess my only, my only question is, if we do that, are we going to have the ability to have all the information in six months instead of going through study session, after study session, after study session? Which means, what I'm saying is, if the council wants to do this, is it going to be productive? Are we going to go through the same scenario?
Well, that's my... Well, I was, my... I would, I would, got, got you on that. I would, I would think that those that remain on council or if we have, we have new that we would study, would conduct a study session four months, um, from today and then look at how things are, how things are going with anticipation that it would be at, at six months. But those are things that, uh, we've, we've expressed to the city manager that, that we want. And I'm sure that that is what he is going to, to bring forward to us.
Through the chair, Your Honor, Councilman Salsedo.
Discuss, where, where, are you still?
I still have the floor, Your Honor.
Okay, go ahead.
What I would say is that, uh, based upon our, our study session, uh, it sounds like the, the motion is gonna pass and it should pass because of the financial inaccuracies that we were given or however you want to call it. So it would not make financial sense to do this at this time. So I don't have a problem, I wouldn't either way. But I would say that, that that would be the way to go. I'm just want to make sure that based upon the discussion that we, and again, that's all. Other than that, I'm done. Thank you.
Okay.
Through the chair, Your Honor?
Councilman Salsedo, go ahead.
Yes, two comments. The reason, we had a study session discussing this. It looked like the consensus was that the city manager will give us a report every month. And I'm in agreement with the six-month period. But also in the future, could we have our attorney on a mic? Because I really didn't understand or hear what he had to say. You know, with all due respect, I always agree with him in most cases, but I didn't hear a word he said. So, thank you.
Okay, um, he is here. We would try to take care of that. Mr. Cruz, if you could help us out with planning that. All right, further discussion on the amendment?
Your Honor, through the chair?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
So, can I here have a reading of now what, what we're voting on exactly? Do we have, um, this does come back in, in, in six months? And whoever in the council is gonna know what's going on at that point?
Well, we have, uh, City Clerk Carey, can we have the, the reading of that, uh, the amendment?
The amendment is to amend the above resolution to continue the current contract and reevaluate in six months.
Can we have a date added to that in the six months? I, I, I strongly would like a, a date where it has to come up. And then I can support it.
So that would be in February of 2021? Um, do you want it at the February 8th meeting or the meeting of the 23rd?
February 8th.
February 8th.
Okay, is that good with the mover and supporter of the amendment?
Yes.
Okay, is there...
February 8th, 2021.
Is there further discussion on the, on the amendment?
Through the chair?
Yes, sir.
I don't believe that's correct. I believe we need to do it now. We've been dragging our feet for two years now. And we've got to figure out, there's more accountability when the people come in. So let's have some accountability in this city and do it the proper way. Thank you.
Okay, is there further discussion on the, on the amendment? Then clerk call the, the roll on the, on the amendment?
On the amendment, Councilwoman Ross?
Yes.
Council President Brady?
Yes.
Councilman Higgins?
Yes.
Kelsey?
Yes.
Parkinson?
No.
Salsedo?
Yes.
And Mayor Carnes?
Yes. So we then would have discussion on the amendment, on the, uh, resolution as amended. And then, hearing none, then, um, we would, uh, call the roll on the, uh, resolution as amended.
The amended resolution. Councilperson Kelsey?
Yes.
Parkinson?
No.
Brady?
Yes.
Higgins?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Salsedo?
Yes.
And Mayor Carnes?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a, um, cover letter from John Myers, our City of Lincoln Park building official. And the subject of resolution to amend the, um, City of Lincoln Park fee schedule related to trade permits, electrical, mechanical, and plumbing. So this is just for information first. Over the course of the past year, I've been reviewing the fees charged by the building department for a range of trade permits and services that are offered. The attached resolution will amend the adopted user trade fee schedule does the following. One, eliminates the current trade fee schedule that is regulated by the number of inspections requested. Two, fees will be charged according to the itemized services. Three, administrative fee will stay consistent. These changes will help balance out not only the fees charged to residential property fee versus a commercial property, but also the cost of the inspector's time to inspect a smaller job versus a larger job. Currently, the cost is the same no matter how large or small the project. Additionally, the proposed changes will increase accountability of contractors when it comes to actual project costs versus number of inspections. So in resolution, it is, whereas Section 209.01 of the City of Lincoln Park codified codes states, "Council may by resolution from time to time adopt service fee license, permit, application, and user fee charge, changes, now charges, for its agencies and departments," said changes, said charges to be paid forward by the individual or business against whom or which said changes, charges are assessed. And whereas it is necessary to recalibrate, calibrate, calibrate trade, which is electrical, mechanical, plumbing, permit fee schedules administered by the building department. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Lincoln Park mayor and council does hereby amend the City of Lincoln Park trade fee schedule for those permits and services provided by the Lincoln Park Building Department as presented in attachment, attachments, and said attachments be implemented and given immediate effect.
I'll move on it. To the board?
Discussion?
Your Honor?
Yes, go ahead.
May I? This is really confusing to me. Um, I asked for examples and I didn't get any. Um, the current, I, I'm, I'm finding a little discrepancy between the cover letter and the proposed fee. Because the cover letter states that the administrative fee will stay constant. But according to the current fee schedule that I was emailed and the proposed fee schedule in the packet, that administration fee went up. Um, I, I'm just confused. I'm really confused and I think, um, we need more explanation.
Mr. Myers, can you, but can you address that?
Yes, I can. Thank you, Mayor. The, the reality is it should stay at $35 instead of 40. That is an oversight on my part because we were going to submit an entire series of evaluations of financial fee scheduling, not just the trades. But as we got person in time inclusion, we decided to just go through with the trades, uh, fee schedule reevaluation. And we did not complete the rest of the fee schedules over and above the trades. So, uh, Councilwoman, you're right, this should be, that should be left at this point at $35 instead of 40.
Well, can I ask you, would you mind if we tabled this and, and then just did all the fees at one time?
You are the council, you get to feel free to do what you think is best.
Because I'm seeing, yeah, because I've got questions on, on if we're leaving right now the, the building department fees the same or we're gonna look at them anyway in the future, is what you're saying. Um, yeah, maybe, I don't know, maybe we should have a study session on it. I, I, I was looking for examples to kind of help me, but...
I'm sorry, you, you sent me an office yesterday and today and I did not get them to you, but...
And, and I guess the hard part is...
There are two sides of study session, there's two sides of the example that you can take a hold of. One is a low end versus a high end. Example, right now, we have a low end. And if you needed a circuit put in your house to put an electrical outlet in your kitchen because you don't have one or you don't have a, a GFCI. And presently, our plan would be, it would cost you 15, about $35 plus 80, 315 for one circuit. Same would be the same case if you were a commercial builder and were putting a, a system on your roof of 50,000 ton compressor and heating and cooling. And then you would have air ducts and ventilator systems inside. You would call an inspector out to do an inspection on that furnace with all your air duct returns. And for all of that work that he is involved in, it would still cost him $35 plus $80 for that inspection. So both the amount of work and cost, the two extreme differences, would cost exactly the same. So one would be extremely, um, a little cheaper if you were a house owner and you were going to get a, a new furnace and you're gonna have an electrical inspector come in. Right now, it would cost you $115 to make sure that the electrical connection to the furnace is done. With this, uh, itemized system, it would cost you an administrative fee plus $25 instead of another 80. At the same return, a furnace on a commercial building with all the ventilation, all the, of the, uh, return air systems, all the exchange air, because they would call you out and say, now I got my furnace up, I have all my air ducts in, please come and take a look at it. It would still cost you the same as it would cost a person to put a, an outlet into a furnace they just put in their house.
So, okay, I'm sorry. I was just gonna say, so then maybe we should just table this until you can give us the, the fees for both residential and commercial so that we can see the, the difference?
You mean in the rest of the building department recommended, not just the trades?
Yes.
Okay, is there a...
I'm looking, I guess, because I'm, I'm looking at, at our building department to, because it's the, the, the ultimate goal, right, is to have homes and businesses that are code compliant.
Yes.
And we want them willing to get permits, not run from them. I would, I would, I would be more comfortable in, in seeing the comparisons. And I want, and I want them, I want the fees to be fair. Because like I said, I don't want them, I don't want people running from, from the building department. Right now, I know that right now we have a lot of, um, people that don't come in and get permits. And I don't know if part of it is just the issues that we've had or if part of it is our finance.
Are you making a motion to table this?
Yes, that was my question.
Yes, yes.
Is there still a discussion, Your Honor?
Well, we have, we have a, a motion that's on the, that's on the floor. I have not received a second for it to table it.
I'll support it, I'll support it to table it.
Okay.
Some more clarification.
Okay, so now we have, um, discussion on, on tabling or, or is this just...
It's not debatable.
It just goes directly to a vote. All right, well, that's, that's why we have a wealth of knowledge on our, our, our council. So with that, we have a mover and supporter to, to table this. So we would then, clerk, call the roll?
May I, Councilperson Ross? Brady?
Yes.
Higgins?
Yes.
Kelsey?
Yes.
Parkinson?
Yes.
Salsedo?
Yes.
And Mayor Carnes?
Uh, yes, yes. Okay, so that item has been, um, has been tabled. So we'll move on to the next, which is, "Resolve that the residents of the 1,200 to 1,300 block of Washington, which is between Monty and Secot, be granted permission to have a block party on Saturday, August 29, 2020 from 3:00 PM until 9:00 PM under the following conditions. One, that the street be barricaded at each hand and close the vehicle or traffic. Two, that the party be over by 9:00 PM or dusk, whichever comes first, and the street be reopened to traffic. Three, participants must comply with Executive Order 2020-147. Four, subject to cancellation if required by order of the governor. Per the recommendation of the Police Department, Executive Order Number 2020-147 states, one, any individual who leaves their home or place of residence must wear a mask covering over their nose and mouth, A, when in any indoor public space, B, when outdoors and unable to consistently maintain a distance of six feet or more from individuals who are not members of their household." Okay, in discussion? Clerk call the roll?
Councilperson Brady?
Yes.
Ross?
Sorry, yes.
Higgins?
Yes.
Kelsey?
Yes.
Parkinson?
Yes.
Salsedo?
Yes.
And Mayor Carnes?
Yes. Our next item is resolved that Daniel Wright, 1706 Ford Street, Department B, be appointed to the Downtown Development Authority to fill the unexpired term of Todd Gally, term to expire April 1, 2022. Discussion? Clerk call the roll?
Councilperson Kelsey?
Yes.
Higgins?
Yes.
Brady?
Yes.
Parkinson?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Salsedo?
Yes.
And Mayor Carnes?
Yes. Next, we have the item that was, um, dropped down from the consent agreement, consent, uh, agenda. Um, and it's the, has a cover letter from, from Chief Ray Waters. And it has, uh, dear members of council, the Lincoln Park Police Department is requesting permission from mayor and council to allow the Police Department to open the bid process for the police towing contract. The current contract will expire October of 2020. Police Department is not, has had several issues with our current towing company not following the current contract. We believe that it's the best interest of the department and the city to go out for bid and to not renew the contract. And I set the resolution down. So be it resolved that the mayor and council authorize the Police Department to solicit bids for the police towing contract. Funds for these services to come from Police Department Towing Yard Lease Account 101-305-941. Okay, discussion?
I have a...
Um, Councilman Kelsey, go ahead. You, you chimed in first.
First one, I, I got two questions first. First question is, uh, it sounds like there were some problems and they weren't explained in the cover letter. I don't know if you do that or not, but it's, it sounds like that we're off of some issue. Because we just, uh, what do you call it, extended this contract in 18. And I haven't heard any issues since then in front of the council. Uh, and my next question is, is what's changed in the bid? I'm looking at the, the two different contracts and there have been some changes. I'd like to discuss that.
Chief Waters, are you able to, uh, talk on this?
So, the contract is obviously October of 2020. Uh, we've had a couple complaints, or more than a few complaints from citizens coming out, um, saying that they've been overcharged. It sounds like they probably have been overcharged. So we feel like it, you know, it, that reflects on not only the police department but the city. It makes us all look bad. We don't want to, um, you know, play with somebody that, uh, not gonna follow our contract. It makes us look bad. So we're asking to go off the bid.
And the changes in the contract from the previous?
There was, uh, one minor change and that was that we're, we're looking at the possibility of using, just using our yard at 500 Salfeld. Um, but that's just a possibility.
Well, through the, I guess...
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Through the chair to the chief is that, that's a major improvement, which is good because we're paying, uh, city towing $45,000 a year to use their tow cap.
Yeah, that would save, the main purpose behind that, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but our main reason behind, was that we would save the city exactly what you said, $45,000 a year. If we went with that. And we had it inspected and it is feasible to do. So we're looking at that as a possibility. I, I think it's, it would, that would work for everybody and work good for the city.
Okay, well, I would just wanted to have that explained because it's, it has changed the scope of the contract. And I appreciate you, you know, I was just concerned because I've been a council six years and I know we talked about this and we extended it and I was just, just didn't see. You explained it, I was just wondering, but I know it was really bad. Just put this way, you explained it, thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry, who is, who is next?
I...
Okay. Council President, go ahead.
Um, basically, I am very surprised at this. I mean, we have dealt with the Zachro's since I started in 1972. They're a family-owned business, they have many different entities within the city, and they've always been very cooperative as far as working with the city and, and meeting our goals and everything. So I was very surprised that this is coming up at this time. If the current contract does expire in 2020, October of 2020, then obviously, there's no harm in going out for bids, but I just wanted, I just wanted to say my piece that this is, this is a, a business that's been so generous to the city in putting on their auctions, and, and stepping forward, and donating vehicles, and it's just, but I can't question the fact that if their contract is about up, then to go out for bids, I'm, that's fine with me, just I wanted to point that out to everyone that it's, they've been here 100 years. Thank you.
Well, I, I second that, what you just said, Council President, in that they have done very good work for us, as in Traffic Division, as Chief, that they, they have done that, but we are in a competitive situation, and sometimes we, we have to go out and, and see what, what is available. And, I mean, they're, they're welcome to, to submit, to submit a bid just as, as anyone, anyone else, and we'll have to do what is, what is best for the city and our, and our citizens.
Your Honor, for the Chair.
We had, I think Councilman Parkinson was first.
Yes. Thank you, sir. I've always, I've answered a lot of people's questions about the Zachro towing, or city towing, and I've had a lot of complaints about it, too. So I think it is time that we go back out for bids. So I'm glad it's coming up. Thank you.
Okay. I'm sorry, who is next? Councilman Higgins, go ahead.
Um, my question is, and it, it's something that the Council President brought up, if we're having problems with this particular entity, should they be allowed to bid on the next one? I want the chief's, I, I want the chief's thoughts on that. And I also would like to say that anytime a long-term contract comes up, it's a good thing to get out and find out what, what the market will bear. We may find somebody who's going to pay considerably cheaper. It's, it's the thing we should do for, financially, for the citizens of Lincoln Park.
To, to answer your, your question, the city attorney said that there is, we could not prevent an organization from, from submitting a bid. I mean, that could be taken under consideration when you're looking at who gets awarded the bid, but for just applying, that that cannot...
If I'm not mistaken, have we not taken off other vendors who have done bad work for us in the past? I would, I would...
Not that I'm, not that I'm aware of.
I would suggest some of our street work. I'll just put it that way. I don't want to get us in trouble.
I, I got you. So further discussion, there was somebody else that, that was asking.
Your Honor, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
Um, Chief, when I, when I look through the, through the contract, too, I was a little taken back by the, the M-Paw lot had to be at 500 Southfield, but you just said that that's, that's a possibility. Are we changing the language in, in the bid?
No. So we're, we're shooting for 500 Southfield as our bid, as our Towing Yard. We're, we're just waiting to see what some of the bids come out at.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. Further, further discussion? All right. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilperson Kelsey?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Breeding?
Yes.
Higgins?
Yes.
Parkinson?
Yes.
Salsito?
Yes.
And Mayor Carnes.
Yes. Next item that we have are, well, it's resolved that the accounts and claims payable for those items greater than $25,000 be approved as follows. Becker Arena Products, 50% balance on community center flooring, $35,495.80. CoreLogic centralized refunds, refund duplicate tax payments, $29,987.16. Downriver Utility Wastewater Authority, June 2020 sewage user fee, $128,327.20. Downriver Utility Wastewater Authority, July, August 2020 excess flow charges, $231,294. DTE Energy, July 2020 gas electric streetlights, $68,321.37. Great Lakes Water Authority, June 2020 water billing, $205,826.48. McKenna Associates, July 2020 Building Department Services, $60,375. This nice item has a check released for due date. It's MERS, July 2020 defined benefit, $219,313.95. City River View, June 2020 dumping service, $35,106.73. Stryker Sales Corporation, Life Pack Monitor for FD through COVID funds, $29,158.4. Wayne County, December 2019 to May 2020 prisoner housing, $43,600.
A move. Court.
Discussion?
A question for information. Is that Downriver Utility Wastewater Authority, is that going up the cost since last, since June? I mean, as far as the excessive flow, is that interrupted, or was that the last few years? Does anybody know?
Would Lisa, would you be able to, Lisa Greggs, would you be able to answer that?
Um, I, I don't recall getting a new, access flow, a new increase, but I'm sure it probably did go up. I can check on that, and I'll email you tomorrow.
Okay. That's, I'm just curious. Thank you, Lisa. I'm just curious. Thank you, Your Honor.
Yeah, it did seem, it did seem higher. Further discussion? Clerk, call the roll.
Councilperson Higgins?
Yes.
Kelsey?
Yes.
Breeding?
Yes.
Parkinson?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Salsito?
Yes.
And Mayor Carnes.
Yes. We've reached the, the time for our city managers' reports, so Mr. Grzan?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. I'll just give a couple quick updates on some stuff that's been going on. The last few weeks, we had had some complaints about some overgrowth, the Prop Spinners Park, that has now been taken care of. Over last week, John's crew has been really diligent working on a number of water mains. I believe at one point last week, one day, they had six water main breaks, and I believe they've gotten them all cleaned up, though I think they had some more today. Couple events coming up. We've got the Gleaners Food Distribution, which will be at the community center on Friday from 9:00 to 11:00 AM. This Saturday, the E Course Creek Cleanup is going on. We've had a lot of rainfall in spurts. We haven't been super wet, but when we've been getting wet, we've been getting a lot of rain, which has been causing some basement backups, some street flooding, which has also moved towards some complaints about insurance claims and residents not being notified. So I've done a little bit of a cursory look...